Ladies and gentlemen, we're going back to one of my favorite cities to revisit a topic of knowing your local candidate for the 2020 election. And we're going to be going a little bit niche here today by taking a look at the president of the city council of Baltimore. Now you might think that this is a little bit of a niche subject because I know I got my boy Larry out there recommended this topic. And thank you very much, Larry, because in doing some research for this, it's been very enlightening. You've got two very, very stark contrasts in ideology looking for your vote this November. But it also serves you well to know about the role that a president of a city council serves. They are normally responsible for the budget and looking after fellow council members. This is a normal practice for any president of a city council throughout any major city that has a local government that is set up this way. And just because they're in charge of the budget and then they hold all the checks and balances quite literally over the comptroller and the mayor of a given city. It's a very important, a very, very, very important position to be held. And you want it to be held by somebody who's responsible and somebody who has the best interest of their city in mind at all times. And like I said, in doing research for this topic, I can definitely say that one candidate has a history of looking out for certain causes and the other candidate is a fresh face to the scene who I always, that type of candidate is one that I always like to champion because I believe that they are best suited for this. Because we have a bunch of like, some people like to call them swamp creatures, but I'll just call them career politicians that only have their best interest and the best interest of their friends in mind and not for the city, not for the electorate at large. And we will go ahead and start with, unfortunately, I have to start on a bit of a downer. The guy who's way ahead in the polls, his name is Nick Mosby. He is the Democratic nominee for this position and currently he is a part of the House delegates in the 40th district in Baltimore. He's been a part of Baltimore public life now for, oh boy, quite a long time now. And born and bred in Baltimore and has really made a name for himself since the onset of coronavirus. I will go back to the original article that I had pulled up here. Now it was a very packed field on the Democratic side to be, win the primary to be the Democratic nominee for city council president. And Mosby made a really big name for himself for pressuring the state to provide a racial breakdown to expose potential disparities in health and treatment with an aim of limiting the harm to the African American community. Now, as we continue down the profile for Nick Mosby here, we're going to find out that this guy is a very identity politics heavy. He's very heavy handed in his policies whenever it comes to wanting to push social justice causes. And I'll start, stop short of calling him a black identitarian, but it's not too terribly far off. He's very, very concerned with the plight of his community, which hey, fair enough, is an elected official, especially in a city like Baltimore, and I've got the demographics here to back it up. It is sixty, nearly sixty-five, sixty-three percent rather, black or African American. And hey, if you're looking after the majority of people in Baltimore, guess what? It's definitely something you should be trumpeting, but much like non-identitarian politicians, you should be looking after your entire base, not just whatever ones you would like to pander to. And that's a standard that I like to hold every politician to. And this video is going to be no different. So this is an article that's prior to the Democratic primary for president of city council. So some of the verbiage might be a little bit outdated, but Mosby comfortably won his primary. Mosby, forty-one, was the race's frontrunner even before the pandemic shutdown of the state. A poll for, a poll for the Baltimore Sun, the University of Maryland and W Y P R F M released in early March showed that while many Democrat, many likely Democratic voters were undecided, Mosby was favored by a quarter of those surveyed. Stokes polled second at seventeen percent. That was the incumbent and somebody else who was very, very prominent for this position. Somebody was expected to contend up at the top and yeah, he ended up smoking her actually. I'll show you the results of that poll. Yeah, he won nearly forty-one percent and Carl Stokes actually finished with twenty-one percent of the vote and Shannon Sneed snuck in. But still Nick ended up winning this vote by nearly sixteen thousand votes. It wasn't as close as that twenty-three to seventeen lead that you seen here in the article. Pushing for the state's response to the outbreak to take into account the disparate impact on African Americans. Mosby says, said, is in line with efforts he's made to combat other problems rooted in inequality. Well, to be fair, if you're going to be consistent with your inequality message, like we showed earlier, sixty-three percent is black. And I see white people at thirty and we'll just pull it up here. So I'm a little bit more accurate. Yeah, you see a sixty, forty split between blacks and non-black. So if you're going to be talking equality here, you might be taken from Leroy to give to Larry. If we're going to be fair about it. He pointed to his work in the House of Delegates that led to a state law banning the city from seizing people's homes over unpaid water bills. I'm actually be on board with that depending on how long that they're out and what the other outside circumstances are, but yeah, you shouldn't be kicking people out over unpaid water bills. But I'm sure fuck should be able to sanction them depending on what type of income that they have. I don't think that'd be a, you know, too far out there. While on the city council, he successfully sponsored legislation to give ex-offenders a better chance of competing for jobs. What kind of legislation is that? I've always tried to fight to solve the really difficult problems by incrementally moving our city forward, said Mosby. Who is married to Baltimore State's Attorney Marilyn J. Mosby, also a Democrat. We will get to her shortly. Trust me. But that was a little bit of a background. So he's very, very woke, as it were. He's very aware of social justice causes and definitely tries to push them to the forefront of his campaign. And we can take a look at his voting record actually, because we have that readily available to us. Because he has been in the public life for several years now at this point. So these are bills that he himself have, has sponsored. Here's one of the very important resolutions that Nick sponsored. Establishing a commission to rename Negro Mountain, providing for the membership of the commission, requiring the commission to provide certain information to the governor, the general assembly, the Maryland State Archives, the Maryland Geological Survey, and the Department of Natural Resources honor before December thirty-first, twenty nineteen, and providing that Negro Mountain is said to be named in honor of an African American man named Nemesis. And if the history is verified, the name of that mountain should be changed to Nemesis Mountain. Very important that we get rid of the fact that Negro Mountain was named in honor of the black heritage of Baltimore and its surrounding areas, but I'll be fair, Nemesis Mountain sounds a lot cooler. So I don't know, I don't think it really needs to take up any time of an elected official to go through the process to rename a mountain, but Nemesis Mountain does sound cooler. I think that's fairly objective of a claim. And he also sponsored H B four eight two. And what does that do? Allowing a credit against the state income tax for a certain amount of donations to certain qualified permanent endowment funds at Bowie State University, Coppin State University, Morgan State University, or University of Maryland Eastern Shore, requiring certain taxpayers to add a certain deduction back to federal adjusted gross income to determine Maryland adjusted gross income, limiting the amount of tax certificates certified by the comptroller to no more than two hundred forty thousand dollars, applying the act to certain taxable years. We'll cut through the legalese on that one. If you donate to a historically black college in the Maryland and Baltimore area, Nick Mosby believes that you should be entitled to tax deductions for that. Not for just donating to good, all encompassing universities, but specifically black universities for a city that is sixty percent African American. Okay, makes sense to me. But I'll be fair here, when I was looking through the bills that Nick Mosby has co-sponsored, he did co-sponsor one that I very much agree with prohibiting the county, a county board of education or public school from spending any money from a source to directly or indirectly provide a teacher with a firearm or train a teacher in the use of a firearm. And providing the act does not apply to a school-approved sport or club that makes use of firearms. Oh, I'm sorry. Did I mean very, very much agree with? I mean, I couldn't disagree with it more. Everything that's on my channel is all about the Constitution and how great it is for all of Western society. How life, liberty and the pursuit of happiness is paramount in Western society and successful cultures. And once again, Nick Mosby shows a rather negative view of the Constitution by not wanting to keep classrooms safe, because hell, in my opinion, you should teach teachers how to use firearms and allow them to protect their students in case of another horrific school shooting. I don't think that's unreasonable, especially with these sociopaths out there that want to take policing out of schools. Because I don't know, maracism, I suppose. But that's all Nick Mosby's really about. He's just worried about furthering black causes. And making sure that that old pesky Second Amendment is nowhere near Baltimore. But sometimes a voting record doesn't prove any kind of intent. Maybe he just had to vote along party lines because he is a staunch Democrat. Every, all of his branding is very democratic and we don't know the individual until we take a look at their personal opinions, what they put out there to the world. So I've got his Twitter page pulled up. Nick J. Mosby, father, husband, twenty twenty Baltimore City Council President, Democratic nominee, Maryland delegate on the twenty-fourth district and former councilman. Yeah, this really reads like a Tumblr feed to be completely honest. It's so many different social justice causes. And you know what else we can do? We can take a look at his, all of his media that he's posted. I'm not good until Colin Kaepernick is. The NFL systemic oppression to villainize his peaceful protests will never sit right with me. I am with Cap. I do quite a bit of sports coverage on this channel. You know my opinion on Colin Kaepernick. I've specifically done a video on Colin Kaepernick. He is a grifter. Nick Mosby is also a grifter. So let's get to the man of the hour, the man who I believe is the best choice and has one hell of a hill to climb in order to get to the, get to the top of this city council mountain. Man's name is Giovanni Patterson and he is a really good dude. He is right now working in cybersecurity as an engineer. He has his own business and the dude is a prominent figure in Candace Owens Blackset Movement. And everything that he puts out there is all about returning the black community to family. And that's very important because that is one of the defining factors in whether or not a child is successful, if there is a two-party or two-parent household that leads to success at a rate that there is no other way to measure it comparably. He's actually done us the favor of filling out the Ballotpedia survey here at the bottom. So we're going to take a look at everything that he believes here. Giovanni is proud to be a Baltimorean and currently lives in West Baltimore with his wife and two children. A natural problem solver, Giovanni currently works as a cybersecurity engineer where he identifies and fixes complex problems on a regular basis. Giovanni routinely volunteers his time to mentoring and encouraging young black males to pursue careers in science and technology and not gender studies or racial theory like Nick Mosby loves. This dude is wanting people to go into the STEM fields and secure theirself a proper future. Great man, great man. He is guided by his Christian faith, which provides him with the strength and wisdom to accurately pursue changes for Baltimoreans. As city council president, Giovanni hopes to continue his lifelong commitment to service and his vocation of solving problems to help address Baltimore's persistent changes. Fifty-seven years of Democratic control in one city. I mentioned it in my Kim Klaesik video and I've said it before, that one-party rule in any city, regardless of party, is always a terrible idea. That means that it's either an incompetent opposition, which because Giovanni went uncontested in the Republican primary, shows that there is a distinct lack of attention cared and paid by the GOP in these certain areas. And it's taken these young entrepreneurial spirits having black individuals come through in these historically Democratic strongholds. Like you look at Billy Prempe out in New Jersey, Kim Klaesik in the same, in West Baltimore district for Congress. And these people are stepping up and there's also the guy running against Maxine Waters out in California. I forget his name at the moment, but they're all doing great things because in these historically blue districts, there is never any GOP outreach. That's always what you hear from the constituents out there. The only reason that they think Republicans are terrible people is because they've never met anybody until, you know, these black guys and girls go out there who are representing the GOP, the new, the new wave of the Trump Republican going out there and spreading the message that yeah, we're all about liberty and family and looking after and taking care of yourself. As opposed to here's a handout and stay eh, just about a poverty and yeah, we'll come knock on your door every four years just for your vote. No, that's not a good way to live and Baltimore is one of those crazy places where the population peaked at around the two thousand eight housing bubble. And then as soon as that burst, it's been on the decline every year since. They deserve a better class of politician and before the end of this video, I think I'll be able to describe that Patterson here is definitely that right candidate. So here are the three pillars of what Giovanni's running on, family. I am the only one willing to be openly, open and honest about the challenges Baltimore faced. And that is the destruction of the family, absolutely. With the breakdown of the family, men have been forced away from the home and generations are growing up without fathers. I have proof of this. He is not spouting horse shit. This is back to that same diagram page where we had before with the population demographics and what we have here is households. So nearly fifty percent, nearly fifty percent are non-traditional families. And then you have a single parent or a single individual household, the twenty-one percent at female and five percent at male. And that shows you that he's absolutely untrue. Only a quarter are two-parent household. And that is not a recipe for success for everything that I laid out previously. We'll get back at this. All too often times, fathers who want to be involved emotionally are pushed away unless they pay and are punished by aggressive child support systems. Sound like a men's right activist, but that's not to be used as a pejorative. We have a child support system that suggests it takes both parents to raise and support a family. He had a culture that suggests it only takes one and circuit judges that ultimately don't care about what's best for the family. I love that message. Every Republican, every freedom-loving individual should be running on that pillar right there. That in and of itself is enough to convince me to be completely honest. Ownership. Baltimore's tax rate is very prohibitive and a deterrent for ownership. Another point that I'm very, very pleased to see. To reduce the tax burden to a declining population, Baltimore City will need to reverse and expand its tax base. Absolutely. And that's what California is going to be finding out here very, very shortly with every rich human being leaving. And let's not leave out New York City as well. There are multiple ways to do this. All right. This guy actually has a plan instead of just a, I'm a black problems. Thanks, Nick. The city can obtain grant funding to restore dilapidated and abandoned homes and sell them to a family as an affordable housing option. Absolutely. I do believe it was in my Joe Biden tax plan video where I recommended using, instead of, we all hear about section eight housing on how government subsidized renting programs. But there is another less talked about, but a much more successful program out there. They're called section five housing. And that's when the government offers a path to homeownership by subsidizing it and creates the incentive of keeping up a business or keeping up a home that you own and therefore you have more of a stake in it. And anybody who's ever been given something as opposed to working and earning towards something knows that they always, always, always take better care of something that they've worked for. And that's what it sounds like Giovanni's attempting to do here by refurbishing these dilapidated homes, which you see in mass in Baltimore and trying to return them to people who can be potential homeowners and grow the city that way. I think whenever I hear grant funding, I get a little bit nervous, but that is definitely a great way to go about it because you are working at the problem from the base and growing it up that way instead of just gluing branches back onto a tree. The city can sell off zero tax vacant lots and properties and allow for private ownership for those properties. The private ownership will allow for the property tax to then be collected on what was not previously a source of revenue for the city. I, that just continues on my point that I was making. And finally, opportunities. Baltimore is a city full of talented individuals, especially within the arts. Absolutely. A reason why I'm so passionate about Baltimore is because, well, I, if you've been around the channel for a while, you know that Baltimore is my favorite team. I've done retrospective on what I consider to be the best, the Baltimore Ravens team, the twelve Ravens. And yeah, a long history of Blues and the fucking authors. Has anybody heard of Edgar Allan Poe by chance? Yeah, exactly. It's a rich city with a rich culture and hopefully one day when people like Giovanni are elected and Kim Klaesik are elected, they turn the city around and I'd be able to visit without fearing for my life. Because as you might be able to tell, I am a coordinator as a city. Our arts and entertainment should be an industry fostered and leveraged as an economy booster. Here, we will create public and private partnerships to create opportunities for local talent, increase tourism and attract national talent and export film and music similar to what Atlanta has done with the film industry. Exactly. Yeah, they turned a stagnant economy in Atlanta and turned it into a second Hollywood. Because we all know that California's ridiculous regulations led to a bunch of film sets being moved north across the border to Vancouver and Toronto and out east to places like Pittsburgh for, I know that's where I do believe Dark Knight or Dark Knight Rises was filmed. Because New York City was also way too expensive and Atlanta gets a bunch of high-profile crime dramas shot there because guess what? George was run by Republicans and they don't have those stupid kind of tax laws there. So it's cheaper to do and creates a booming economy. And now they've elected a retarded Democratic mayor there who is hell-bent on ruining the city once more. But hopefully they can correct that before it becomes a longstanding problem. But now we'll head over to Mr. Patterson's page here and we'll take a look at what policies he finds to be very, very important. So on the column of education, accountability and educational funds and resources? Absolutely. Start lowering the cost of schools. It's ridiculous that people have to take out twenty, thirty, forty thousand dollars of debt for a degree that may or may not ensure that they have a viable option for work coming out of these long degrees. And I'm not talking about gender studies degrees. He was talking specifically about the STEM fields. And if we're looking at reducing the cost of those vocations, absolutely, one hundred percent. Reintroduce moment of silence and pledge of allegiance into public schools. That is a part of the Donald Trump American exceptionalism plan and I don't see why not. The country, Western civilization was founded on the principles of the Judeo-Christian faith, like it or lumped at atheists. Guess what? They are the best values out there. And if you don't believe so, well, tough titties. Create vocational centers and deeper integration with business resources focused, focusing on trades and entrepreneurship. The STEM fields, absolutely. Public safety, accountability within Baltimore Police Department, yes. That is a video that I would definitely like to touch off on. And if you guys would like to see my opinions on reforming the police, feel free to drop it in the comment section down below. Because I got a couple of ideas going around. Increase integration between police and community associations to solve and prevent crime. Yep, the more integrated the police department is with the community it serves, the better off they are. Because then they are comfortable with approaching the police officers in order to resolving conflicts before they have to escalate to a point of riot or violence or terrible situations with being scared of calling the police instead of dealing with it within your community. We keep it within our walls. And finally, jobs. Increase integration between the industries already located in the city. Just in case you guys didn't remember, Under Armour is headquartered in Baltimore as well. And quite possibly the most prominent athletic gear producer in all of sport right now. So it would be nice if they could work together and create more business for the public by lowering taxes and regulations, just a thought. Encourage innovation from city residents with preferred contracts awarded in the areas of technology, environment and transportation. Why not? Baltimore is a major harbor city and you should take advantage of the fact that the Atlantic Ocean is right there. Bring industry matching the talent located here in the city, especially that relating to film, music and the arts. Just what he touched on before in the opportunity section of his Ballotpedia questionnaire. But I think now's a good time to compare and contrast social media. So as we seen, Nick Mosby here, he loves himself some social justice messaging. He is not afraid to put his beliefs out there and he loves himself some Colin Kaepernick. Now what does Giovanni believe? Operating principles, truth, love and forgettiveness. Very simple description. And what's his pinned tweet here? I have a dream that one day we'll no longer be concerned about equal outcomes, but equitable outcomes based on one's effort and character. Democrats sure love to drag out the works of Dr. Martin Luther King, but that sounds a little bit more consistent with his message. Don't you agree? I think so. But as you can see, yeah, there's a, geez, for the past little while here, since I've started covering Giovanni here in the section of the video, you don't see any sort of divisive, you know, segregationist language. I haven't spoken lick about it and it's just been about improving everybody's chances and improving housing businesses, the family. Those aren't exclusively Latino, white, black, Asian issues. Those are people issues and that's what Giovanni seems to represent and I can definitely appreciate that. And I also said that I would circle back. Because when you are president of the city council, you also have a treasurer that is appointed along with you. Somebody who's going to be looking specifically at the finances while you have to take a look at everything that's going on with the city council itself in accordance with managing the budget of the city. Now Giovanni is going to be running with his wife and Nick Mosby is running with his wife, the district attorney as well. And they have a pattern of, let's just say, failure. And to be fair, this was written by Giovanni himself and it might be colored slightly to slander them, but it brings up a bunch of fair points. Giovanni Patterson Mosby, the twenty-twenty Bonnie and Clyde. Uh, oh, Baltimore City's power it couple. Marilyn and Nick Mosby have been truly great at politicizing neglecting the citizens of Charm City. In exchange, they have experienced personal and professional gain over the past decade. Unlike Robin Hood, a heroic figure in the popular folklore, who many could support since his thievery was from the betterment of the downtrodden and those who were taken advantage of. The Mosbys, put bluntly, are more comparable to the infamous Bonnie and Clyde. They do not steal from the rich and give to the poor. They steal from the poor and give to themselves. The Mosbys have continuously stolen from small shops, including minority-owned businesses in the same manner that their crime ring has been stealing from Baltimore citizens. Their catch and release approach to law enforcement and punishment has stolen peace of mind and safety from hard-working citizens. Just like Mike Schmidt in Portland, AG out there in Multnomah County. She is, and by she, I mean Maryland, is not likely to prosecute anybody who has been brought forth to her based on rioting charges. So yeah, there you go. There's another fair comparison as well. Their catch and release approach to law enforcement and punishment has stolen peace of mind and safety from hard-working citizens. Since twenty fifteen, Baltimore has lost over fifteen hundred black men to violent crimes, stealing fathers, brothers, uncles and friends from families and communities with little more than a public outcry from the Mosbys who helped perpetuate the cycle. Since twenty fifteen, Baltimore has lost over a hundred and eleven thousand jobs in large part to the Mosbys and their desire to line the pockets, while allowing the pockets of the Baltimore citizenry to dry up, stealing hope and financial stability from a city desperate for true leadership. I hope you guys aren't finding this boring because I'm finding this very, very excruciating and quite cathartic really. Since twenty fifteen, roughly thirty percent of all students to attend high school in Baltimore have failed to graduate without so much as an utterance or plan from the Mosbys, stealing the otherwise likely success from young men and women who offer so much. As demonstrated on the twenty seventeen National Assembly of Educational Progress, of all fourth and eighth grade city school students tested, only thirteen percent were considered proficient or advanced in reading. Of all fourth and eighth grade city school students tested, only thirteen percent were considered proficient or advanced in reading. Wow. That means eighty-seven percent were below the reading ability. That is, that is shocking. Holy crap. In fourth grade math, fourteen percent were proficient and in eighth grade math, only eleven percent. Holy shit. This equates to roughly eighty-five to ninety percent of city students being ineffective in math. Now you can see why Giovanni holds education in such high regard. Meanwhile, uh Nick is trying to. Make sure that classrooms aren't safe. These numbers indicate general trends that show that the Mosbys have not only stolen from children. But their lack of effort to fix issues in education has stolen the next generation of adults and overall failure of our city. Wow. Wow, if you guys wanna read through the rest of this, uh feel free. It'll be linked in the description below, but um. Yeah, to say that they are crooks of the worst kind, just when I'm staring at here while I'm recording. Um yeah, that's fair. That's fair. I understand that this is a more of an opinion piece, but those facts there are irrefutable. Uh the school system is not working. And when you are at a local level, you can affect so much with what happens within your city. Better than what the governor can do and definitely better than what the president is able to put into his purview. Based on a city-by-city, state-by-state basis. Whenever you guys go into the ballot box, if you are. Diehard Trump supporters, or if you're riding with Biden, you need to understand that there is an importance at the state level. And that there is a super importance at the local level, which you need to pay attention to. And that's the purpose of this video series. To know your local candidate, to understand what they are running for and the importance of what they are running for. Know what they're running on so you can make an informed decision. So you don't just click R all the way down the ballot or you don't just click D all the way down the ballot. That's not gonna help anybody. That's just gonna perpetuate the cycle that leads to fifty-seven years of democratic control in one city. That is dying at the hands of these do-nothing Democrats and Giovanni Patterson is at least looking to make a change, so. Whatever it means, he has my full-throated endorsement. The dude is trying to accomplish a lot and I hope. Anybody out there in the Baltimore area, especially you Larry, because you kicked me onto this dude and I'm super glad that you did. Hopefully you go out there on November third and you vote the fuck out of Mr. Patterson because he's a good dude. And uh if there's any local state race out there, it doesn't matter how niche it is. I will cover it because all of this shit is very important and you guys deserve to know the knowledge of that in who you are responsible for electing. And that'll be a great place to end this video. I had a lot of fun researching this topic and uh I thank you all for the gift of your time. I've been Don Consuelo. I want you guys to follow your gut and get after it. Take care, everyone.